Run.
Um, this is our workshop. We're going to start having these little workshops. My team is willing to go in for two hours. So if you have plans, you should invite them. My team is just, could you take a time out of your day to be here to visit and you should visit us and share insights? So this is a project they talk about. And it's in place to create more stories for the town in four parts. Instead of burying that part to try to reach out to the people in the four parts. Instead of trying to help with the funding in the four parts. But my team is working on three all within two hours. Anytime that means when they have an extra meeting here in their workshop. So that way during morning, you know, when you see a notice, you can say, it's going to be two hours. I'll read it and go over the grant register so everyone knows. They usually have a copy and stuff. But this is a major project for community, for counties. So I know we can see that happen next week or even start following it next year or two. But we have to start somewhere in advance to start working on a little project and a little thing that we need to work on. I'm on, uh, I'm a little rough. I feel all right. I did have the COVID last week, but I've been on my population plan, policy stuff, whatever. Stay on the next few days. So, uh, I think I'm fine. It's out of mind. So I came back from the court actually, I think I saved Christmas tree. But if you stay see, we'll start with the prayer and, uh, Commissioner Ward. And then we'll, uh, I'll go over the agenda as we go through today. Uh, and do you feel it necessary for you to go around the room and do your presentations?
I don't know who any of you, well, except for one, uh, I know about eight.
Um, yeah, the Commissioner, the Mayor from Bracken, uh, Mayor Martinez, myself, County Judge, Commissioner Temple, Commissioner Lutabo, and then our Agent here, Mr. Durst. And the rest of those city of Bracken residents, Fort Clark Springs and stuff like that. My assistant, my day assistant, Megan Flores, and then our grant writers and stuff would work a lot on this. This is Andy, uh, who's home of you here. So that's kind of the team that's been looking at this and discussing this and working on putting things together and studies and stuff. But this type of people stay or receive a local order, permission order.
That's right. I didn't really talk, but we thank you for this, uh, this day here. We thank you for trying to be sincere and what we just asked you to do. We thank you for this group, this simple period of day. Lord, we ask you to listen to me here for some time. Thank you for who are community, uh, for the Lord that you pray that's good. Lord, that he bless our nation, uh, bless our state, bless our nation and its leaders. And we just ask, Lord, that, uh, once again, he would inspire each and every one of us to, uh, serve the Lord. We want to see that our community be, uh, we thank you for all that you, you give to us each and every day. Of course, Jesus.
And, uh, then generally, um, just discuss the time to 100, review the needs of group of the city management structure. Then we pass the supervision in 12, 15. Review reports and maps, committee here in hydrology. Review and discuss suggestions and ensure the projects out by, uh, review reports and needs for each. Discuss whether these are roles in support for the project and empower the foundation of the project. If we get all that covered, I feel like we're probably key, but if we don't, we can create a problem. We're going to do it, we'll leave back and see. And that's just kind of how everybody's getting. So since you know, when I go be here, a lot of hours a day, everything I've had, we'll be here. Come back and we may end up another meeting in a couple of weeks. Takes enough, takes enough, go back. China, there are a couple of rounds of some dates. You can see there are four spring masts, so we don't have a whole lot of them. Nobody one in my office. This office is secure, so obviously have one. And then there'll be another mayor, the C, and stuff like that. And a big one for Florida, I mean, it's like, because Shaw's office is bad, and it's kind of a two. But then there's also these, I mean, it could be like two extra groups. You know, you have a passion, we'll try to throw a lot of few things up on the screen up there as we're discussing, talking and everything. That's our team. I say this is where you're leading the stage to talk about, uh, and stuff, and commissioners and stuff. It's a huge grant project that will be grant funded if we, if, when we get to that stage and go forward. Well, yeah, and these workshops, you can obviously incorporate every part. And so with that being said, I'll kind of clear what this office is about. My interest, uh, I don't want to talk a whole lot, but this is Mr. Durst as well. Uh, if you want to start, uh, Mr. Durst, you can kind of do the issue, whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Durst or Mr. Ward should help us with the history of, uh, the, uh, the information on, um, the creek itself. Um, over the years, I know that the city and the county have tried to, uh, acquire, uh, purchase some properties along the creek. Uh, we, we do want to minimize flooding of homes and, uh, businesses and all of the things that, uh, that can flood when they are on the creek, the lifeless creek that has fallen, wouldn't want to treat. And so our goal with, um, I think getting this information out and trying to decide on projects that need to happen. Um, we have to look at all the creek, not just one section, but we do have to look at the whole creek and how, how it's going to be affected by the projects. And the projects are, should be many. There's not just one. There's a few many, and they're very large. So like the judge said, there, this will not happen overnight. It will not be one project. It's going to happen, happen in phases, in phases that will, uh, benefit each other as we go through. So, um, Mr. Ward, in the past, has been able to give us a little history on, um, the creek. Um, the dams, you know, that are on the town. I don't know if you're aware of those dams that are uptown that are for flooding as well. Um, the Corps, Army Corps Engineer put those in back in the sixties, I believe. And so those are there as well. The county maintains those along with, uh, uh, the US Department of Agriculture and, uh, NRCS. And, um, so those, those are maintained by the county as well. So just, um, at this point, uh, we're just looking to try to get started. Uh, kind of figure out which direction we need to go, what needs to happen for the county and the city and Fort Clark Springs. And, um, making sure that, uh, the things that we do are beneficial to residents and to businesses as well. It's your turn.
Good to see everyone here. Uh, good group. This is great. Uh, the, uh, kind of the history on the watershed, uh, number one. Uh, the, uh, town, it's a port of something flooding, uh, up and down. The watershed, you know, you guys think where are they? They're on the north side of town. There's an east and a west branch of Lost Moore's Creek. And generally both run off of Lost Moore's Mountain. And so one on the, kind of the northeastern side, one on the western side. So it was, uh, the community effort, the city of the county, uh, Soul Conservation Service, it's called at that time. And, uh, Fort Clark with this maybe as well. And the, uh, desire to instruct the watershed, they have some whole water back and let it flow. And there's no gates. A lot of people might be going, well, I'm afraid it's getting ready to open the gates. Uh, it's open all the time. There's a big problem on each one that, uh, is set at a height, a level, to where when, uh, the big dams fill up, the water flows into them. And then it, uh, goes through the town and into the fort and falls at the river and river. So, uh, the dams were a big, big improvement for what communities. And, uh, there, a bit of nothing that was never addressed was the downstream closure and that screw down as well as in the fort. And so it's been a desire for sixty years since it was built, uh, to, uh, address those particular issues and make every attempt to, uh, reduce, uh, incident flood. And so, uh, what has been done generally in the past has been brushing on the dams and in the bowl itself on each one. And to try to maintain, uh, the integrity of structures, uh, the, uh, under the supervision of Soul Water Conservation, now called NRCS. Uh, they don't want brushing the dams because the roots cause the soil to be loosened and susceptible to erosion. So on the grass, you know, brush. So, um, that aspect has been pretty well fitted due to the years of what we have not been able to, uh, accomplish until recently, uh, when the funds have been made available for grants. And near to Peter will be a grant, but it, uh, it is, thus it was not appeared to be to apply for funding to help us to, uh, improve the integrity of the channel. Uh, what really was, uh, a high, an high order, I'll jump to, uh, around nineteen ninety, there was a flood and, uh, many were affected by it. There were a number of residents on the fort affected and so they all lost. That's against the county and the city, the fort, and soul water conservation. The outcome of that was the order from the District Judge that we make matters immediately to begin addressing the need for, uh, the flowage, uh, and the basis of the lawsuit floods. We had failed. When I say we, maybe we had a piece of the problem that failed to maintain the, the flowage of the creek. Both root, wrack hill, and it was poor. So there again, years have gone by since that. So now we find ourselves with an opportunity to address that. We find ourselves with an opportunity to, uh, Mr. Durst, I'll have, have something to say a little bit about, uh, his efforts, his engineering. Uh, and, uh, we wanted to develop a plan where people would also, in addition, you see the benefit of the, uh, the flowage, that they would have access to flood insurance. Uh, right now, we don't have any flood mapping that's been approved. And so no one is, you know, telling, uh, flood insurance. And many have asked through the years, probably, that. So, uh, what has been accomplished has been, uh, the development of the, uh, the flood, which will be able to use in, uh, and on the fort and on the bridge, uh, doing the bridge, some of the residents can go. So, uh, this, uh, the reason for, uh, of course, our efforts are to, uh, not to step on the vehicles. It's, for instance, if, uh, private going has a position, you want to make in respect to, uh, the development of the flowage. Uh, you know, we have to be sensitive to that for Fort Clark Springs. Uh, whatever the desire not to be on the fort, uh, or the development of an improvement of the full estate, he says to that. There has been no plan that's been adopted. We have, you know, the engineering part. We had those points of reference in place, so we had not approved, uh, a plan. Uh, and it could be presumptuous apart on, let's say, Queen County, it was not approved at all. Uh, beginning to be presumptuous for us to do that without, quote, saying, and they concerted that on the part of the city, the fort, the county. And, uh, many others that are here today, we want to have input about the, the development of the flowage. What has, uh, happened in the way of grants, uh, was granted, uh, about eight years uh, to claim the, uh, all of the degree, uh, that all of them were created. That included, for smart, the way that the, uh, the grant funds were, uh, able, uh, the regular use grant funds on the fort is by way of easement. It was granted at the time, the watershed, the dam's development. It was actually conveyed from Texas Revolution, which is a subsidiary of Brown and Root. And, uh, the reason to that conveyance was for that special reason of maintaining the flowage, uh, of the fort. But, uh, having, you know, you know, saying basically, easement is there. It is ready to the city and the county to utilize, uh, for the maintenance, for the creek. But again, what has been done in the past has been with a force, it issues like acknowledgement, approval. And again, uh, we are sensitive to that, that, you know, we need to work into certain, uh, to improve. Uh, without that, you know, our application for funds is really, you know, uh, I guess you'd say, uh, not valid if, uh, we not be supported. And so we would have to address only that area that, uh, we had a piece with more to do with the press. That would be beneficial, uh, for the, for the, so. That's kind of, uh, a little history on how it kind of evolved. There, you might say it's taken a long time. It's a long time coming, but that doesn't mean that, uh, at this point in time, we can't step in and do some things to be, uh, brave. I mean, it's so.
Mr. Ward, I got a question about the lawsuit, super screen. You said it's sort of close, but you can just black with flood mediation to that, uh, is what I'm wanting.
Yeah, the obligation was, and it was supported by the Super, uh, was that the entities that failed to maintain that the flowages. Uh, and they were a part of us to sue. And, uh, and so that, I think they're, uh, they basically, maybe some of them always tried to support you.
Well, I agree with that. Oh, I like to sue the suit. Lawsuit, I like to, I'll be, I like that. Uh, the grants, it was, uh, the ones, uh, that's a, uh, all of it.
Still, there are people who see the court. The people still believe that.
Or regarding, uh, you're asking, you said, like, to, you said it was a lawsuit. Thus, either someone prevailed or someone did not prevail. And it will dismiss, either way, there's got to be a case number or an order for the court. Uh, I'm not sure how much you know about it. And it was north of the fort, the county of, uh, that looks at nineteen ninety, nothing till now? Is that how it's all unfolded? We're, we're reacting now as of nineteen ninety, but?
Well.
That's why I don't know.
I, I would say that's an encouragement that, uh, we needed to basically, uh, address the issue. And that's why I was trying to promote this action and why, because all of this is coming out. And so I had, uh, I was on the commissioner's board, found the lawsuit spot. Okay, and this town, the person, ninety one. And the District Judge came to me with the, you know, and put it on my evidence session. You guys, they can do, you know, you say, you can do, and we thank, uh, the lawyers. And so, uh, we were certainly, you know, way aware, uh, of the, uh, the legal part of the, uh, the, uh, where we could. And that is the cooperation, albeit, we still, uh, maximize, uh, the flowage against, uh, the burden of future, uh, so.
Tim, in, in your presentation, you said that there has not been, uh, a survey done of the creek uh, when it comes to flooding. And I was here five years ago, and I would say that is pretty early because I didn't see any, anything like FEMA, uh, any palpations along the creek that would be felt as a nation. There is now. And there is as of this last year. So I'm wondering about a survey, how that FEMA thing is put up.
There is a flood mapping, too. You live on the fort, you live on the fort, so there is flood mapping. That's also the same, since you're, yes. So.
And I, I have no direction to. Uh, who, who is responsible for maintenance of the creek? Does that give us, does it place a lot of confusion down there?
Well, under the terms of the, if you're talking about the fort, we, under the terms of the reason, it was ready to be seen.
Okay, so.
The, so, I'm surprised you don't call them out there. They, uh, NRCS, they come and they analyze and they look and they make recommendations. And so, um.
I'm talking about maintaining the creek in terms of logs that have fallen, their trees, stuff like that.
Yes.
That's, that would be in jurisdiction of wherever you, if you're in the fort, that would be in the jurisdiction of the fort.
Okay, so the fort is responsible for maintaining the creek in the fort.
We, we would be responsible as well. And, uh, may not have made it real clear in the beginning, but, uh, a grant was obtained, and I'm thinking it was, uh, just a little under a hundred thousand, uh, eight years ago, approximately, to clean it out. And a contractor was deployed locally to go in and to pull all the fallen trees and brush out of the mainstream.
Okay, thank you.
So, and thanks.
Mr. Ward, the free, just, just representation. The issue of the, of the lawsuit came back in the early nineties. And because of that, we had thirty years ago, we're now here at this point. That's, it's taken thirty years to get to this point.
Well, yes.
That's why I don't know. I was, I'm trying to, nothing, nothing happened in the lawsuits?
Thirty, thirty-two years, thirty-three years.
So nothing happened as a result?
Well, all it was basically, uh, like I just described, her creek's been pulled out of the creek, fallen trees and limbs. And, uh, but, uh, as we know, it may not be a significant, uh, you know.
That was, that was a penalty for the lawsuit? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I had to guess, and I'm pretty sure I'm right on this. The lawsuit probably was a result of damage being awarded to the landers. It was, now, if you guessed it, it wasn't an order for them to do it, obviously, we being held content for thirty years. It probably damages where we ordered to the plaintiffs in that case, and it's just something that needs to be done. It's not where our current violation of the lawsuit occurred years ago.
I was, I was sure.
Yeah, I saw it one.
Yeah, because if that was the case, it was a lawsuit, the one because the property loss. And because the, of course, do something.
It was a civil, it was, it was, I'm sure a civil case for property damage, but that's one of those cases.
All right. I'll introduce myself. I'm Jim Durst, University of New Orleans Development. And I would card that your face. Anybody interested in any questions about this, future, please, for free, and quality, to like to, uh, make sure that everybody accurately understands what, what we did and what we're, uh, are, I guess, reporting about floods. So, uh, as part of the project, we were employed to, uh, study flooding in Rockville. It, from Lost Moore's Creek primarily, that was the understanding of it when we started, is flooding from Lost Moore's Creek. Which is the route from the, uh, water that enters the dams on the north end of town, all the way down to the fort. And so we're supposed to do some sort of identifying the lands that the, the city has, the county has. And then the primary thing was to identify what the, uh, the flooding was and what could be done, ways that flooding could be mitigated. So when we talk about flooding, uh, there's several different frequencies of flood that you can look at. It's, and the people call it like a ten-year, a twenty-five-year, fifty-year, a hundred-year flood. Those, those are based upon, um, the relative percentage of the chance that you would have that size of flood every year. A hundred-year flood means that you have a one percent chance of having that size of flood in the, in the year. It ain't given yet. And you can have, you know, your floods back to back in two, sixteen years, which that's, that's happened before. Um, so that means, you know, when you have a hundred-year flood, you're, you're safe for another hundred years. It's just, that's, it's a, it's a probability that you're going to have this big of a rain event or, or a larger. When we, uh, so I employed, uh, Hyper League Engineering, uh, to, to assist with this. We did do some surveys going up and down the stream on the various processes that need to be done. Uh, and then, uh, Hyper League, I did the, uh, analysis of it. Uh, when analyzing it, one thing, um, started out, or to say upfront, and so, some of this stuff would be, just sound like, uh, fictional things or it might, or just complicated, confusing type things or irrelevant, but they do have a purpose in here. And so if anybody has questions while I'm talking, please ask. We updated according to the current standards versus the rainfall precipitation that we used to, to study the streams. It's according to the current standard, which is actually, has been adopted by FEMA and State of Texas. That we're supposed to use Atlas fourteen, which is a method for estimating rainfall in various places in Texas. Yes, Atlas fourteen. That's a very important thing to understand because when the, the tanks, the dams were built, uh, north of Rockville, there was a different standard at that time, and it was a lower standard. And because of the rainfall events that have been received and the, uh, additional flood waters observed, the standards were reevaluated and they were up quite a bit. So, and that's one of the things that, uh, when we look at the dams now, according to the current standards, they're not sufficient. So that's, that's one of the things that leads into current efforts to, uh, to mitigate flooding is that we're using the current standard. So you're going to see, uh, a higher volume of water calculated than what you would have had in the past. That's, that's a big difference. And we're seeing this, you'll see this all across Texas. We calculate things according to the Atlas fourteen, or if you, if you can, some folks are using like the Wolf City ordinances still, which are less, but if you're going to do it right, you need to do it according to the news handle. So that's, that's one of the things that we did. Okay, so for Rockville, one of the things in, in analyzing it, we really started focusing on Lost Moore's Creek, um, as the primary source of flooding, but it quickly became apparent that actually Rockville has two sources of flooding. And when I say two sources of flooding, the, uh, the effect of the flooding, uh, Commissioner Ward, if you, uh, you, uh, time it also. The flooding noticed in Rockville is really around US ninety, particularly on the north side of US ninety, and then also in the northern part of Fort Clark Springs. The north part of Rockville isn't, it is bad, isn't inundated as bad. The southern part of Fort Clark Springs is not, not hurt as much. But around ninety, it's, uh, there's quite a bit of flooding. The source of that was, was found to be actually Lindsey Creek on the east side of Rockville. When it flooded, Lindsey Creek actually produces enough water that it jumps out of the creek and it comes westward into the city of Rockville. And it comes, it jumps out of Lindsey Creek, uh, just north, north, or east of, of Rockville. And then it, uh, crosses into the Lost Moore's Creek watershed. And that's, that additional water, the combination of water coming south and that water coming west causes the water to back up, both water to back up in Rockville and in Fort Clark Springs. And that's what causes a lot of the, the inundation. So identifying those, uh, as the primary sources of, of the flood, we started looking at, uh, methods for getting the water out. One of the ideas was to, uh, prevent Lindsey Creek from, uh, from crossing into Rockville. And so we looked at possibly, um, over on the east side of, of Lindsey Creek to, uh, cut a channel to divert that water south. And it would cross US ninety east of Rockville and it would go down, that would be the York Bridge. It would go down through there, down into another watershed. Uh, there's some, that could be done, but there's some issues with that also as far as diverting water that would have come down into the, uh, come down into Rockville. You'll see the, uh, the gap where, where it jumps over is right about here. Uh, just, uh, in between the, really in between those, uh, those, uh, irrigated fields. Or, sorry, it's right in here. Yeah, it's right in here. It comes over, it jumps over, but then it starts to proceed east and it actually goes. Yeah, it's right in here, it comes over, it jumps over, but then it starts to proceed east and it actually goes, uh, south of Alibi and the, uh, the Coalt, and, uh, feeds into Lossmore Street, crosses 131, feeds into Lossmore Street. Uh, basically, the quotes said they've actually seen that water crossing 131 going into Lossmore Street, and that's, really, that's.
Two spots here.
Sir?
That's the south of their creek, and that's another drought of the last year.
Okay, down here?
So.
Okay.
Come back right through from here?
Yeah.
Back through here and come out back through here, and then it also comes out of here more.
Right, right.
Just two of the, the process crosses the highway there.
Yeah, yeah, so, so what that does is if the watershed comes south on Lossmore Street and then this water comes in, or then that causes the, the water in Brackerville to back up into the sand, the pond, and, and this, uh, northern, uh, part of Fort Clark Springs and southern part of Brackerville. And that's, that is something that was kind of surprising, because we had thought that US 90 would be a stop, or US 90 was actually blocking the flow of the creek as it flowed south, but actually, the problem is that the water is coming from south to north as it backs up, as it fills up in that area. It, it actually fills up and then, uh, kind of like a tsunami goes north, actually into, uh, into Brackerville. So those are the two big sources of, uh, flooding. So typically, when you, could you zoom out a little bit, sir? So typically, uh, and zoom out just a little bit more, so you can see up here where the dams are, the dams are, and then that's, that's good. That's fine, that's good, and then Lossmore Street comes down through, okay. Typically, when you work on flooding, you try to work on downstream to upstream, because your water's gotta get out. And unless you can, unless you can build something that stops the water from proceeding into town, since that's a very possible thing to do, once it comes in, you've gotta get it out as quick as possible. So starting to look at working, uh, downstream to upstream, summary of the, the projects that we looked at downstream to upstream. One of the big things that we did look at is to stop this water from entering into Fort Clark Springs. What we looked at is, uh, what was recommended is to construct a channel on the east side of 131. Uh, construct a channel, excavate a channel on the east side of 131, and then have it pass underneath, uh, and go down to the, almost to the detention center, and then pass underneath, uh, 131 and empty back into Lossmore Street. That would, that would stop the water on the east side of Brackerville from entering into the Fort Clark Springs area and then continue to send it down Lossmore Street. That's, that's one part. The second part of all is obviously, as you mentioned, that the creek is brushed, it's overrun. So then you clean out the creek, and there's a few crossings in there that would need to be cleaned out, some of them to be maintained, you just improved a little bit. Uh, but clear out the brush and then construct what are called ditch ponds. And what this would be is to remove soil, excavate soil, bring it out of the creek, out of the, out of the unpopulated areas of the creek. Exclavate soil out so that you give a place for the water to build up, so that you build like, it'd be like building a huge tank. And so you, uh, create a place for the water to, uh, to store, uh, while that's the water that's coming south, give it a place to store so that, uh, it could build up in, in an unpopulated area and then flow eventually flows out. Uh, the next part would be to, uh, work on the, uh, Lossmore Street and, uh, Fort Clark Springs, and that would be to widen the creek. Right now, it's, it's like about thirty feet wide, and we would be approximately doubling the width to sixty feet wide. And the idea about that would be on the north side, the, the, uh, the north, the stone wall on the north side is, what is in need is repaired. And so the creek would be widened to the north, and the stone wall would be reconstructed, this will be the idea. Then, uh, working on US 90, on the bridges on US 90, on, uh, US 90 and also on Spring Street, and then begin, uh, cleaning up the, uh, the channel on Lossmore Street going through, uh, Brackerville. And then the, the two, uh, uh, USGS detention ponds, retention ponds, um, they would need to be elevated, they need, need to be made bigger by having the dams raised, and then also, uh, to put in, there'd be a, a pond where the two creeks come together, but there'd be another pond constructed on that, uh, the northern corner that, that we're in through the corner of Brackerville, uh, to allow the water to mix, so that it would, uh, take your dicks together, coming out of the ponds and then, and then flow down through Brackerville. So that's a very quick summary of what we're looking at of the recommendations that we found. Yes, sir.
Um, could you elaborate on the problem for running that down into the York Branch? You said you ran the, the problem, that plan, if you did it on the east side of 131?
Well, okay, so, uh, this is Lindsey Creek, Lindsey Creek comes down and makes a turn, and this is about where it crosses, where it jumps out of the watershed into the adjacent watershed, and. Now, what we were looking at is to, uh, construct a channel to stop the water from jumping into the other watershed. That, uh, there's other, and, and so that would solve this problem. There's other water coming into here, that would still come into the, into the Fort Clark Springs. And so it was decided to catch both of these by excavating a channel on the east side of 131 that would catch all that water and move it south and into Lossmore Street. Another issue that the hydrologist brought up is that the natural condition of Lindsey Creek is that the water comes down and it jumps out of the watershed into, into this watershed, into Lossmore Street. That's the natural condition. If you channel, make a channel to stop that from happening, you're in effect diverting water from the wasp going into Lossmore Street, you're diverting water, uh, into, and, and keeping it in this other Lindsey Creek watershed. And so that would have to be weighed as to what the effect of that would be if, if that would, one, if it would increase water flow in the Lindsey Creek watershed and cause damage, that would be a damage to the land and the water. If it deprived, uh, water, if it, if it took water from the Lossmore Street watershed, it could possibly be seen as damaging their water rights. So that's a, it's a big deal nowadays when you're diverting, if you're diverting water, it's a big deal when you're giving somebody too much water or you're taking someone's water away.
I have a quick, quick question. Diverting on 131, um, if that was implemented, does the water model account for that if 131 channel is implemented?
Yeah.
So it's like, if it's implemented first, does it change the dimensions of the creek or anything you need to do to put out the pressure on Lossmore?
No, they're all, these are all new above, all of them, they're, it's not a true thing, they're in the model that was coming up with, all of these.
Same heavy data.
So, um, thank you for answering that question, and so if the water is diverted from 131 that channel, that could be also into the creek. Um, I imagine I would all give the backflow, but you still need to do the creek widening, say, as part of the listing plan? Although flood conditions are very rare, although they are present, they are impactful, but it's more common that you have drought conditions where the creek doesn't even flow down beyond the populated area of Lossmore Springs. I'm wondering what the impacts would be if you're gonna permanently widen that creek that retain water and retaining the surrounding ecology connected to that water, and it's to be streaming throughout the majority.
The, the size of the, in, in the, the plan usually when you. There's like a pot channel, but right now, as you mentioned, if the creek flows a, uh, fairly narrow body of water, it's like twenty to thirty feet wide. And, uh, uh, so, uh, a pot channel, that twenty to thirty feet would be maintained, so you would always have water in that, in that creek, in that, in that pot channel, what you're gonna say. It wouldn't be necessarily spreading it out over a wide bit, say a hundred, hundred fifty feet wide, where it's just spread out and lost.
They're saying if you put a higher lot of channel, the original creek boundary goes up to a certain level of overflow into the next. Oh, I'm trying.
No. When they're talking about excavating out, actually, I think that most of this, they're looking at, uh, widening, widening the creek a bit, but, but also they're gonna excavate, the plan is to excavate lower and to remove the material, remove some of the, uh, existing soil. And so the creek, uh, the creek would be there, the channel would be there, it would be quite a bit lower, uh, for the. Yeah, I'm not gonna mess with you.
And did you mention that, uh, some sort of structure could also be implemented to divert the backflow? That seems more appropriate to respond to flood conditions than to excavate the creek as it is now, because that seems like it would have really unpredictable ecological implications if you removed, you see from the creek, that would be very damaging to.
The ecological part, it, it is something that has to be taken, that, that is, that would be maybe not. All of the, all of these solutions are not in need of work, they're all built in. To, to get the water to run, uh, to move out of the, this, these are all new above.
So is that, is that channel gonna be widened all the way through the whole Fort Clark?
Uh, yes, that's, that's the idea. It, it depends, like, um, in the, uh, in the historic area, at the, where the entrance is, uh, the channel, it's a channel about thirty feet wide and it's stone walls on the either side. I think what, what we were looking at, and this is just preliminary, we don't have actually any plans on this at all, there are no construction plans on this yet, we're just doing the study. But the idea was that because of the historical nature, it needs to be preserved as much as possible. The wall on the southern side is, is pretty well intact, the wall on the northern side is, is damaged, it actually needs to be rebuilt. So part of this would be to take out the wall, the idea was to take out the wall on the north side and widen to the north and then rebuild that as a, as a stone wall, you keep the wall on the south side. Uh, the other thing is the springs, the springs would not be affected because they are not in the public. The springs that pool are not in the public.
So it's about the area all the way to the Red Bridge?
To the Red Bridge.
That's, that's further down, uh, past the, well, they're.
So that's, that's where it's at, the Fort Clark, that, so we're, we're, we're Native Americans, and we, we go to the creek, we do prayer, we like smoke, we do ceremony during Fort Clark, and the Crown and Angels go, maybe there's like one that's along the creek. So if you widen that area where we do that, you're, you're essentially removing the area that we go to create a ceremony. So we just wanna, that's why, we wanna make sure that that's taken into consideration.
Okay, I, like I said, there are no, there are no plans, this is the study right now. And there, and that's why we got the workshop to, to, and to, you know, look at the ecological. It's something that's gotta be taken into consideration. The other thing is also we brought up is that there may, uh, be sork trees, specimen trees of, uh, live oak, pecan, and uh, I don't know about walnut, or, but I'm sure they're down there. Uh, so those may need to be.
We love those, but there, there are also, I'm gonna kind of get on top of what you're saying there. We, we, uh, had a drought this past summer, and, uh, it was summer before, and so there were quite a few people that went into the creek bed and found articles that go back hundreds, if not thousands of years, from the population who was living around the creek at that time, and so there would be a loss there that's disturbing.
Uh, one, uh, thing is, is if you widen the creek bed, uh, that would expose the wat, uh, water in the creek bed to more evaporation, and probably would have lessened the amount of water.
It's part of the creek.
Well, well, water is going weird, and, and mind you, this, I don't think this would be paid. The materials that are there right now, the creek is in a natural form, I think one of the things that needed to be done with, uh, to, uh, promote the flow, because, uh, the, uh, student says that the brush along the creek needs to be cleaned out, and that may have, have an effect on the creek, but, uh, but otherwise, still, the, uh, the, the, the current textures you see there, the earth and the, uh, the trees, I, I, I'm not gonna pull up any trees, except for maybe the ski, small ski or hackler, oh, my heck, right. But anyway, that's.
There are not hackler, you have ski trees along the creek.
Sure, there, there are, there are many of them there, um, and some of that does have to be cleared out. It really does, some of this has to be cleared out, like the, uh, the significant ones, and, uh, as far as, uh, sir?
The old roads?
The old roads, right, no, we don't want to take any, we don't want to, we don't want adversity impact that. I mean, I'm gonna be the one that fills the, the old road line over the property.
But they have the property.
As far as the implementation of the plan, it would seem that you might, I mean, you're arguing through the stages, initial stages, if those are going to be effective and have to mitigate flooding, would you need to pursue the rest of the, well, pieces of the plan?
Yeah, I mean, sure, but, uh, the reason why we're talking about all these things is the whole model together, this is what, this is the, the effective way to reduce the flooding, uh, for Fort Clark and, and the city right. And so it's all one big, it, it'll be done in stages, but to get the overall effect, all the pieces will need to be done.
And maybe someone who's run the lawsuit could answer this, but the particular area that we're there was flooding of the, the residential dwellers and public owners, they filed that suit, does anyone know specifically where that is?
I, I think it's around the bend where there's a plateau and the houses, are you talking about? On the work, so where 150 is, um, and where.
131?
Well, there, that whole area right in there, but misses a workhouse, but just a little bit further east.
Could you zoom in there? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, unit one, so in unit one, that bend as it comes around, and there's sort of a plateau and that floods.
And so if you can move this up that way, a lot of the areas that they're looking at is in this area, and, uh, the excavation would actually be, uh, a lot of the excavation would be in this area. Where it's supposed to be, it's a little more open, it's not exactly dry enough and clean, but we'd be cleaning out that other area to make like a tank to, to let the water run in.
And then that, I mean, that's, that would have to be then maintained because of the growth of the ski, we have to.
Yeah.
If you do, just our down, instead of this one, sir? All right, is your fight just one of this, or you're ready for taking on the creek or?
I think what they're, they're looking at this general area, there's lots of water that comes in there, so they're looking at that, that area. Uh, it's like a, it's, it's like a eight hundred thousand yards of dirt, that's a lot of dirt. It's a lot of dirt coming out.
And then do what with the materials?
That's another good question, I, I, I don't know.
A lot of the potential that material would go to the dams, they're talking about raising some of the dams eight feet.
Eight feet.
The two dams up there north of town are raising them eight feet.
Right.
So a lot of that dirt excavation, it should go that way.
Yes, definitely.
I have some comments about the flooding that has happened historically in unit one, there are. There are three houses in there that have flooded, there are a bend which has just been, no, you know, just talk about that. The reason it floods in there is not just the creek. It is that from, uh, the administration building on down, all the water floods down, comes into unit one. Unfortunately, the person who built unit one bulldozed the ground to make it go down to the creek instead of being up on a bluff. So it, it goes, it just, all the rainwater floods in there too, so it's a double problem. It was privately mitigated by, uh, building that moat around, what's it called? The, with a flag in it, some, right, I was. Yeah, that moat is in part to, to try to mitigate that other water coming in and flowing down to the creek. We don't answer it, you know, nobody does that.
Well, there's any other questions? If y'all have any questions, I've got my cards there, you're welcome to take them, and if you have questions to come up with.
I just have a question, uh, you said you, you've been hired by the county, right?
Yes.
How long have you been hired by the county?
Uh, a year, year and a half.
You've been doing well this role for about a year?
Yes. Well, I know you have other questions, a year and a half, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a question then?
Were, um, there moving the structures from the creek, not just in town, when you can flush, like, uh, structures or bridges?
Uh, yes, there were some bridges that were identified that, that would probably need to come out. Um, there are, um, uh, that need to be come out, if you're pushing like a, a low water crossing, a lower, lower, lower crossing.
Just, and the bridges that you're talking about, mainly that are gonna be replaced are gonna be the ones in town. So we have around twelve water crossings that need to be either replaced or, yes, because a lot of the, the water crossings in town, um, we only have a few bridges. And they were already topped out because of all the sediment that has gone through with a lot of rain. Because of the backup, that it's not able to flow because it's, it's falling back up into the city, where there's human life and there, the homes, it starts reaching those banks of people's property. So that way, that is the reasoning that we need to, like I was just saying, it's gotta be complete, the whole thing. Because then people's homes and people are living there are gonna be affected.
So, so are they gonna be, could the channel, could the channel, could the channel be? Yes, it'll be a bit deeper, yes. That's gonna, it's, uh, probably.
But there, there is a couple.
How much, how much would it be?
Uh, as far, if, if, maybe, if there's a place, it's not a whole lot, it's, it's, it's like a few, a couple of feet, that most. There's not, it's not a whole lot. Big thing in that, that, the big thing you look at is the, the width, and those are all the crossings, the, the, the crossings are all in here. But the channels, they're looking at making the channel like seventy-five feet wide. That's one of the big things, a channel seventy-five feet wide with a pot channel in the center. So that has to low flow the water, run down that pot channel. At the higher flow, then it'll shred out into the, to the water channel.
Are, are, I'm talking, uh, cement or just?
No, it would be, it would all be, uh, swelled, yeah, it would all be swelled. Yeah, we don't wanna, we wouldn't minimize, the places that have the concrete would be the road crossings.
I have another, and ecologically, maybe, there's an environmental, environmental study for the, the year that a water of the creek, as far as accessing the pilot channel, would the overflow channel be barrier access to the water though?
Uh, yeah, no, no, there aren't known practice pages that have done this. This is just a study on the hydrology right now. Uh, but as far as, uh, wildlife, that's something that would be taken into account. But, uh, we're not looking at any barriers on the, on the creek, I don't see that. In general, the shape of it's not gonna be a, a lot different than what you have now. There's a, there's a, uh, not enough land area, depending upon how big the creek is, it'll fall somewhere between two to five feet, uh, down into the bottom of the creek, that is it.
And then you're not, you're not planning on removing then bridges on the porch that are part of the storage and. Those have been, those have been marked.
Like the one in McCarren Road?
Yes, like that one, they caused it all the time to get over to that area that bird was.
I, I've been out there, I've been, I've been out to every one of those things. I gotta say, honestly, the one in McCarren Road, I know that's, uh, historical because it's, it's, it's historical, it's been due. That's gonna fall down for the times. That's a hot beginning of the, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a free, free budget.
The game is one, though, and if you want to grant, is the word, you always have to have environment, that's, that's, that's way down the road.
Well, that's, and that's a part of the plan, because that's, that's part of you do the grants and you do the planning, and then, and then that's part of the, the environmental study is part of it.
The environmental comes once your grant's awarded. And then, um, they want to know exactly what, what's gonna happen. That's, that's how this should be worked.
But to apply for the grant, it won't have to be created, or not, like, of what, well, you can do. And I'm just hoping the environmental questions are answered before the plans are created and approved.
Yeah, uh, you know, it's a, it's just a general idea, about what, what, what we're gonna do. I think it really is the only, the only thing, to, to come up with this report, a general idea of what is possible or what has been possible. Uh, to be, uh, again, we're, uh, trying to, uh, leave the, uh, uh, the, the, the surfaces as natural as possible. The only concrete, uh, that I'm aware of in, in the whole thing is gonna be a, a road crossings, that's it. Uh, the rest of it will be all nat-, native materials, uh, the soils and then the grasses put back will be, uh, uh, just the, the, the standard whatever is the native type of material, uh, to this particular area. Uh, as far as how the, uh, you know, the, the cultural resources, um, and how the land is used, uh, that's something that, uh, we have to take into, that's something that would be identified in that particular, uh, the, the, the report, environmental report on that particular area, and that's up, that would have to be taken into account. Uh, excavation of trees, make sure that the protect trees, uh, that not just the trucks, but also the, the drip lines around the trees, so that we don't damage areas of trees. That's something that, that would have to be, uh, identified, and that would have to be taken into account.
Is the first phase and this type of thing normally the brush clearing and debris?
Oh, I, that's, that's something actually for the, uh, I think that's one of the items going down the list is to, to wanna try to identify, uh, what the, 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 that you wanna do. It's not in the order that you have to go by, it's just kind of, no. So we, we came up, the overall program, this is what would address flooding in the, in the town, improve it. And so then it's, uh, up to the county, the, uh, city, the court to decide how they're gonna go about it. Right, very good.
The red one.
That's, that's a great plan. Uh, it all started, correct me if I'm wrong, it all started because FEMA was, that idea was, or allow us to apply for monies for future, future issues, is that why the plan started evolving when you're down?
Um, so, I think what you're talking about is a hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah.
So, yes, we cannot, uh, ask for grant funds from FEMA for these kinds of projects without having a hazard mitigation plan. So we have to tell FEMA how we are gonna mitigate flooding, wildfire, um, any, uh, any natural hazard, tornadoes, um, whatever it might be. And so, uh, that's what we've been working on. So we have completed our plan, it's been sent to the state of Texas for their review. They're looking at it right now, and, um, will probably send it back to us for some updates before we can, uh, send it to FEMA for their final approval. And so having that plan in place will allow us to be eligible to apply for, uh, for monies where we could work on these kinds of projects. These, the figures to have this type of work done is astronomical. It's, it's, it's a huge amount of money. And so, um, the county needs grant funding, uh, the entities need grant funding if we want to try to work on the flood mitigation. And so getting, getting that funding, we have to have that hazard mitigation plan in place.
Do you know how much the grant's might be?
Uh, no, ma'am.
You got it ballpark?
I'm anticipating five million.
What?
Good luck. But he says.
For the whole project, it'll be way more than that.
So we've served the dam?
Yeah, you, that's how you would start, right, the dam?
So we can reassess.
I think that's one of the things we'll, we'll discuss in our task on today is like, um, as Mr. Burke should explain, the Ford, you know, that's, that's where we like to start and work our way north, because if we can't get the water out of town, and the dams do start discharging, and they're, they're, they're retaining all that in, they start discharging. The problem is that East End and the West End, the East End crosses, just nearby Church, Church of Christ, and it comes over, and they join, and then they come into town. If that East End would just stay on the east side of town, with that channel over there and the channel here, we might have been able to control, you know, one or the other better for, for Burke, and keep that east side going way east and keeping it down the east side on one thirty-one, and discharging it right there by the prison, and then let it come back into Lost Morse Creek, just north of the sewer plant. It's kind of where it would hit, and it would come back over. And then it would be, you know, to minimize it, and then do the brush control in the Ford, obviously, to help with getting that water instead of ponding and backing up, backing up, allowing it to flow and go off of that hook in the north end. So it's part of the, the, the workshop, so it's prioritizing, you know, it's, it's a major project, and we, you know, we like to do some prioritization, and then, and then we'll comment. We, we can hope to list the priority today, and we meet, so we meet in three weeks again. And somebody walks in here and goes, okay, I got a question, I don't, Mr. Darkson can't be here every time we meet. So what we gotta do is we gotta kind of work in plan and say, hey, you know, if we do this, and we do this, but if we widen the creek here, you know, remember, he's not, he's not really widening the creek, he's basically, basically, I mean, possibly, he's just cleaning out where the natural flow, overflow, and then you come back in, and you would have that natural bottom in the middle. It may be ten, twelve feet wide, and it may be three feet deeper than the, the, the bound, but, you know, that way it, it gets you the flow on, and it jumped out into that sixty, seventy-five foot, it had, looking to move on down instead of flooding or backing up. Or, or we're talking about building those ponds, hey, if we can catch a little bit of water here and hold it, and then that would help with, you know, the trees, and it would help with the, you know, the recharging of our, for the water underneath. If we held that part a little bit rather than just losing it. That's, that's the thing, it's like, you know, if you're looking at this and thinking, you know, hey, take, you know, we got these, you know, there's three big concrete here, okay, if we're architecting this and building this, we may leave those three big trees, but our channel may go around those trees, seventy-five feet, but they're over here on this fif-, this last fifteen foot of it, we may leave in the island, or if those trees are protected, where they ain't the worst. The channel, the bottom channel's over here, but in these flood stages and just flood zones, that water's gonna run by there and get away from, they go back into what would be more or less the natural cut of the creek and stuff, Lost Morse. But obviously, the Ford, you know, visit with them, and then we'll get them, you know, and say, yeah, we're committed to this, we'd like to work on this, and then move forward, the city would like to move forward, and the county would like to simply just do it as a, basically, it's, you know, it's an obligation that we've, we've been told to do apparently long before I got here. So here we are in early, early stages, and that's just a study, that was just like, say, the hydraulics and the engineers and stuff together, and updated the plan and say, hey, if we use Atlas fourteen, here's what we're suggesting that would help minimize this hundred-year flood. And then, once we got, if this project was to take place, and it's gonna take years to complete, obviously, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. But once it got in place and our flood plan got approved by FEMA and so forth, then those residents in unit one, or those residents in the city, if they wanted to purchase flood insurance, they could hopefully purchase it at a fairly decent rate, rather than privately purchasing it now, and it costs us so much money and stuff. But the city's got a huge, I'll just afford, but the city has huge issues and things we gotta work through. Most of all, there are crossings and everything, all that's, all there's water lines, sewer lines, electric, asked to be dug and lowered again. Because we wanna lower that, like you, Mr. Darkson, a couple of feet maybe, but that bottom, it's just a little bit of water, then there's gonna be a natural drain there for that water to go instead of standing in pond and there to go and drink. But then, yeah, we have a seventy-five foot or so channel that we can work that water down through here. If you look at some of the city lots and stuff, Becky, can you bring that map up? Scroll down, this is the north end of town, the corner right there. And then, of course, all that top part up there, all those pink ones, twos and threes that you see, that's all owned by Buster Jimenez. Okay, that channel comes in from the right inside of here, that's coming from the east side. And that one, you see that very little tunnel, when you see going up to the left there, that's coming from the west side, man. The orange squares there, the city already owns this. The, the hash marks you see going down through that whiggle and going in the city, that's kind of the natural boundaries right now of the creek through town. Scroll, scroll a little bit more, Becky. But this is just to give you some ideas of the study and the time that we have spent, and then the engineers and hydraulics. That's it, widening down through town, you know, some people's home entire lots. You know, and those are owned, that are, they may be vacant, vacant, and they may have structural, you know, and those people may not, you know, they may be, well, they say, hey, we're gonna take, you know, we do seventy-five feet, and you maintain your yard all the way down into the channel. You know, we're gonna move, you, you still have the backyard, we're gonna move the channel a little bit in your yard. Then, you know, but the orange, the orange squares there are already owned by the city, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's that, but that's, that's running through town, scroll up. And then we cross all the way down here and stuff. But you can see we have, essentially, we just went and worked just to get the project through town, and then here's Fort Clark. Show this to the man on that a little bit for you. But there you can see the channel, he's talking about where that hook is, coming straight across, there's the interest of Fort Clark, everybody's from, everybody knows where you're at on the back, okay, and just scroll ups.
Yeah.
But then you can see those little pink squares, those are properties that are owned, that are right on the creek boundary, that are subject to flooding and stuff. So you can see the, the hook in there, and yeah, you gotta walk that water around, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bins almost, and one of them's dating the mountain. That's why he's talking about up there in the northern end of that, of that corner, one thirty-one, cleaning that corner out with Ford. Not making a twenty-foot tank or something, but just cleaning that and making a slight bowl there where that water could run there. Get a chance to get held up, and, and then slowly keep going down the creek. And then there's, there's, and there's all, kind of all the structures and stuff that are along the creek and stuff as far as lots and stuff, not structure, but lots. And then you gotta cross down here, there's a couple of little right there, but that, that makes almost a complete one eighty. All right? Well, and, and then your mindset says, hey, that's just cut down all the way completely out, for it, and that may be able to hold an area of pond there, but that water comes straighter right there, it's gonna have to make a hundred eighty to return. Those are things that we gotta talk about and discuss and look at. So I'm telling you, this is.
Judge, Judge, that unit one, is it?
No, it's unit one's way back.
Yeah, that's the one that.
Was that scales?
Yes, that scales.
Okay. Okay.
Let's see, we can just cut that corner and say, hey, let's just, hey, we kick that out, we clean that out, maybe make that an extra three or four feet deep. Or it may be a hole in pond, maybe make a tank for a lot, but it'll all be natural. But then that water, instead of having to make a hundred eighty degree turn there, we can come almost straight back down to where it makes that little job.
Make a little, there's a bridge.
Judge, before you get to Red Bridge, is that, is there a hole in pond there already? Is that where that is?
The, the Red Bridge is the creek in it.
Well, there's a long.
There was a tank there, it was a per generation that went down.
Yeah.
Well, there's a huge, there's, uh, gates that are open all the time.
But this is, to give you some idea of what, of what the engineers and hydrologists have done. They, they've gone through all this force and kind of said, hey, here's, here's, you know, the idea, the, the logic behind using Atlas fourteen and updating our current situation.
I, I, I understand the, um, reasoning for going upstream, you know, starting down here and moving upstream. But wouldn't it make sense to address the dams first since that's, uh?
It's good. For us, for us, to get the dirt, we could use so much dirt that it was removed here, up there. You're talking about.
You want our dirt that's.
But that's, instead of, instead of stop following it, yeah, the fork can add what they're holding. But I can hear teeth, you know, how many of yours?
No, I, I mean.
The plan was if we started down here and we gotta do excavation and we gotta haul a bunch of dirt out, hey, we could go in and start. In the meantime, hey, that could be being done as well, that could be done jointly and we're using that dirt.
Cause to me, that seems like just a logical place to, I mean, the, you know, the heart, the guts of.
We've got, we spent forty thousand dollars this year as the county cleaning those dams.
But we haven't cleaned the creek.
No.
Right.
But, but we, we, there's still a conservation in, in our CS, we, we spent a little over forty thousand dollars unless we, they gave us, they, they granted us the money. We, it was the expense of first, they granted us the money. So we went up there, did a tremendous amount of brush work because the deal is, is that bowl fills with water. But this is not a tank or nothing, it, right now it's probably dry. They're typically dry, they're just catching that water coming off Los Muertos mountain and holding it. As it fills up, I'm Mr. Durson, that thing just fills up, fills up and then here's a drain and then it's a drain. If we don't keep the brush and debris out of it and it closes, then the, the dam, it has, even has an overflow. So it has a big drainage field that comes around and hopefully closes stuff. So that's, you know, that's, those are, are blessings to us right now when we do get to these ranges and stuff. And they'll hold water for a while. And part of the plan is possibly digging those out and making them more like a tank. Cause they just, you know, they're probably not, what, twelve, fourteen feet deep maybe when it's full before it gets to that discharge. Maybe, you know, if I were to dug it out a little deeper ahead of that, it may be where the whole lane, twenty feet of water before we started discharging. You know, that dirt could be used on the dams as well. But then we're not widening the dams, the dams are fenced off, can't even have any livestock on the dams. With erosion control, we don't want to keep the grass buried. So we got to widen, we're talking about accessing more easily around the dams was the basis obviously when it bigger as we go up and stuff, so. It's a, it's a, it's a major deal to that. I mean, if we could get together, work on it and take baby steps and, and protect and, and, and everybody's been a part of the plan and, and visiting and discussing. Can we take every idea then? No. Just got my marriage, we're just gonna have to compromise. You know, we discipline the kid, we don't discipline the kid well, we, you know, we, we cut this, clean this out. But as, as, as we go, thinking the long run, catch the water on the east side of town, divert it kind of and shoot it out, like I said about the prison, what you're talking about. Um, that's why I asked Mr. Durson to be here today and he said, so I said, look, a huge part of this, I said, you may be the fifth, sixth project down the road, but it's gonna, it, it, it's a huge portion of what they own, this family has owned for years, generations. So, yeah, you need to be involved in this. Um, yeah, I talked to Buster Jamel and, you know, where, that's where we are. He's willing to do it, he allows us to do whatever, but he's not, you know, I was like, what if we, you know, if we purchased two of his, and we, and then up there, we're gone, that started, we, talking about moving up all the water. We, we grounded all that to retain through two locks right there, we, we can control it through two locks that we own or the city owns, okay? Boom, instead of crisscrossing, we cut across the corner, you know, through these tracks and again, if we can eliminate that and get it somewhere, hey, we, we join up there a little bit higher and they came straight down through the, you know, through two or three tracks that we acquired. Instead of zigzagging, we look one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, about fifteen tracks that Buster owned right there. They're in there and head down or whatever, you know, we could not say, you know, the, the project would say, hey, we push that, that joint where those two, this part is joint. Move that up a little bit and then they can, they can come straight down through those tracks. You know?
Mr. Durson, what do you say that's called whenever you reroute, like he's talking about?
What, so, uh, channel delineation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just changing the channel a little bit so that it doesn't have that big swath going across all those lots. It just comes straight down through there where you're only affecting maybe two or three.
Yeah. So, so the idea is just a channel, water off the side is possible to do that.
In addition to that, so, yeah, so we, so we straight down the channel to. Very, very soft, very, very few places, very.
Um, one, what, one other thing that I'm saying about, uh, channel delineation, some places that work really well, a lot of places that, that go back, the channel goes back to where the water could go.
It's gonna be our foundation.
So whenever you do the, uh, the delineation, you can clean out channels, you can, um, it really kind of remains active. But when you're actually trying to reroute them, uh, something usually needs to be done, either dirt needs to be piled up, uh, maintenance built to make sure that it goes up, uh, in the direction where you got the company. Um, and, you know, those are, you want to do that as little as possible. But that is actually a very expensive thing to do and it's kind of a, it's not necessarily guaranteed to work. When you try to, uh, reroute it or, you know, when you try to, to change the natural course of the stream.
Well, the fresh can also not in one of the mines, so we miss.
Yes. All up there, yes, and then sort of talking up through those soap slots where the map with the, the pink and the corner, yeah. Yeah, all, all of this, this is what I'll have to be cleaned up also.
I remember seeing a, it's verification, you got the giant canyon that's all along the Los Muertos pathway to the circle. So they're gonna be double, when you give more water in that channel.
Maybe the only way we can be here is that, that is the green, that may be our only, you know, but you're talking, this project, this project is done, we're all, we're all done with community service and whatnot, and so, yeah, it's a huge maintenance. You know, it's like the rain, through the dams, we, we, we go into their dam work and our, and our bowls up there for a few years. And then it costs forty thousand dollars to do it. And that's, that's just what, what was spent on chemicals and labor, that's not including what man hours we spent as far as the rooftop on Road and Bridge, Road and Bridge crew out there, they worked for almost two weeks straight. Working on brush clearing and stacking and burning brushes to, to try to get those where they're more functional is that, that's our initial line of protection. And then if it does hit us, then this, this is our next line of defense that we try to, for this base, kind of get through town and in a controlled manner. Where it, it, it leaves, you know, it's, it's an issue, it'll be minimal damage. But it's been an hour and a half.
Oh.
Where you go.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that message, did you?
Yeah. In order for this to all work and compile to be a, a part of the environment and back to the work rate and to, for the, the channels for debris or what have you and to get our ponds to be, it would definitely all have to be on the same path to be able to make this work, correct? Because if, uh, we can't do something in the city that it's gonna affect the Ford, we can't do something in the Ford, it's gonna affect the city. As, as we can see, we just saw the map for the city, it's gonna affect a lot of homes, a lot of people's lives, right? So, and in the event that anything, a county or, uh, anything that go along, can go along, we've already had, we've been through those events with, uh, uh, COVID, right? COVID was one of them and then the, and then a snowstorm, we're really more prepared for that. So this is something that we're trying to prepare for in the event something like this does happen, that we have something in place. Hopefully it won't take longer than it needs to and, uh, we'll be able to implement this something with all entities working together to, uh, you know, make a great team out of this and, uh.
It actually has happened there, I remember, have, bracket, we got, watch that, I mean, the whole house, we watched it.
Two, 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 whatever we mentioned. So for this thing to be running at all distances, the Ford, the city, the county, everybody has been agreeing. The county, the county, I don't know, I'm gonna ask, the county can play big relative, this is what happened and go down the way.
No.
That can't happen?
We're more of a media.
Okay.
I'm the grant writer. So we have, we have, we're at work, we are, has a litigation plan and all that, so if y'all participate in that, thank you. But we're kind of the media.
Okay.
We're kind of, you know, we're, you know, if the Ford says, hey, no, we're out, okay, city, city said, we'd like to do something, welcome. Then it's gonna, you know, I hear him saying, but no, we're kind of, I've got the media, uh, we, the county's kind of mediator, you know, we're, we'd like to do this to help the city and the Ford and we're gonna do it through grants on this.
And the most immediate remedy at this moment, at this moment would be to build.
Brushwork. No, I think.
Maintain the dams and build.
Maintain the dams and do brushwork for the Ford. You know, yes.
So how, how is, uh, are there gonna be a lot of local people hired for a lot of that?
That's part of our grant department, yes. Uh, any, any of the deals, the solar farms, the wind farms, anything is, we say, we, you know, we got, there, how do you afford it, how do you, you know, you say, you know, the job pool there's, you do have some great equipment operators, you got some guys that are normal, you guys will be able to pay a worker, you know, well, here's a good paying job. The grant, the grant, those kind of grants dictate how much a state person's gonna make. So you're talking about a pretty good salary sheet. Your grants, a lot of times, you'll have three or four pages in there, backhoe operator, plumber, electrician, bulldozer operator, truck driver. And here's what they're gonna make.
What about like maintenance like afterwards?
See, I think that, I, if this was done, there could easily be a person or two between salaries, between, you know, combined salary in the city, the county, the Ford and the county. You know, and say, hey, this is all you're gonna do every day. You know, get your little ganger, your flares, cruise up and down. The maintenance is monumental once we get it started, I mean, once it gets intimate. But the grassy, there'll be some erosion until we get the grass growing and whatnot, there'll be some hot spots we gotta work on, obviously, things like that. But now this, and again, this post, this is something, and this is my, my whole, whole of the county is we're sitting here today talking about stuff that's gonna impact people twenty, thirty years from now. Some of us will still be around here, some of us won't be. But that's what, that's what we have to work on and that's what, you know, the, the, and that's got to commend the commissioner for starting the process, um.
That's another big thing with grant funding is sustainability. How are you going, if we get it and give you the money and get it fixed, how are you going to sustain it?
And that's not to say that I can be a grant after this, say, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the county fifty thousand dollars here to help maintain this. Okay, I got an input back to a couple of employees between the, you know, all of us, but chemicals and equipment, we use that money to maintain, you know, uh, chin change software, you know, do just the maintenance of it, you know? But that's, I mean, that's, and I, I, we will hold these to two hours just so that you know. Uh, just to raise hands, one thirty whether it's in the morning or would you rather have a morning?
I would suggest that, that if our rocks would be like a working.
Okay, all right. We can do that, but like I said, Mr. Durson, you won't be here all the time. Uh, this package I said, well, this is about, these five packages cost a lot of money. If you want that, then email, you mail it to, um, Ms. Becky, we can hopefully email it, it's a huge document. So you, you may not, your server may not accept it, so if it gets kicked back, let us know, we'll try to maybe break it into two parts for you and stuff. But like I said, there's a lot of, to me, there's a lot of grief in that. I tell Mr. Durson that, tell the commissioners, I'm on a fourth grade level and he got about eleven minutes, cause after that I'm gonna grab a snow from a bus car. And that's, that's the way we want to keep it close, you know, we want to keep it open communication, you know, by any means. As equipment will start showing up next week, I would know for sure, so please understand that. And then commissioners change, Ford car change, city council members change, this is gonna go into the next cycle, folks, as well, so. Uh, by us standing a bit, God makes you go over here, that next year, four accepted as well. But we go half ass cop through this deal and get mad and frustrated, that is, it's gonna, it's gonna end up halfway in and then we're gonna, you know, we're gonna wreck and I don't want that. You know, I don't want that, so that's why we'll meet, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have another workshop, um, King County, we need to have another one. Uh, quick, are you wanna work on properties today? Is the Ford, the city ready to talk about properties today?
Okay.
Or y'all wanna go back to your board meeting?
This guy, I guess, we, they heard about this a year ago, they had a.
That's fine, that's fine. Y'all talk about it back and talk about each other's meetings and less, and then once y'all have the blessing or something, let us know. Then we'll send out another email and stuff and post it and everything. And if y'all can post it, y'all can post it, y'all have enough power.
I don't have mornings.
Uh, but, uh.
And when they get posted, you can find it on the King County's, uh, website, King County Commissioners Ford, uh, forum.
Yeah.
Then you go over something, you go to meetings and then it'll be listed there.
That's Ms. Becky's job.
Is that a big one, twenty percent?
I'll try to put it on.
And you should, you posted on. And, uh, the other avenue, you can see it's posted inside the, the board house as well.
And y'all need to post it as a, as a, uh,
Dispatch.
Uh, workshop for y'all, deal and stuff, so more y'all can tell and stuff. Then we'll be sure to get it out, say like at least in a week or ten days notice for you if you want to post it and order your direction, you can film it or shoot it.
So when you go to the county website, that's, uh, that's, that's what it takes.
It's a very useful, that's, it's a very powerful. It's called a partnership. Yeah.
So do you want to, well, we will work, think about priorities, think about priorities. Right, we got some things now, just, Ford car. Uh, cleaning up the creek, oh, the widening of the creek across the front. Uh, Highway one thirty-one, just call it Highway one thirty-one and that's the length of the creek, issue, Highway one thirty-one. The dam toward the town, through town, think about your priority and then think about that water flow. All right? You know, I want, I want that water to go away from me, so I'm gonna start my, my sewer out here. Almost start over here where my water starts to move to my sewer. That's the same thing here, I'm not trying to be rude or dirty, but I'm trying to think, when that water starts here, how can it get away from?
So after we get just a, I'd just like to see a map to look at.
All right.
You know, not the.
We have, we have some pretty big maps already and stuff, and all of that's they bring with you today. So we'll have some maps, next we'll bring them along, they can kind of see all these pieces together. You can kind of see, it talks about the channel, one thirty-one, it talks about coming through town, you can see it all drawn out in there. A little bit bigger, the motion board.
Well, I think to, in order to, to.
Everybody is, everybody is, everybody.
With our priority, we need to.
Just show the overall map of the area with the, the different improvements and where they are.
But we have some bigger ones though.
Yes.
We have some bigger, bigger ones. We have some bigger, bigger ones than any other, but.
There's a very simple thing that they could hold in their hand and say, this is a four, this is the least they want.
Okay.
Well, we can do that, too, that map.
Yeah. There's, is there a link to this? There's a link to this, what this study was on the webpage as well. Let me, let's, let's say, let's, um, city visit, Ford visit, go back to your own and stuff, and then we'll be after that, and then also that, that. More of our big things will be talked about priorities, okay? That may be something that Mr. Durson can make, but like I said, we'll do it probably, I'm going to say that it's ten days, Becky. In advance, hopefully she'll remember, I won't, I hope that she will, but give you like ten days' notice, get your notice out, so, but there's a link to this on the webpage and stuff. If you're not a web, if you're not a webpage person, you want to get it, you know, vis, visit with Ms. Becky, all right? But those are just baby steps right now, we're not even, we're crawling.
Yeah.
We're crawling, we're not even stepping really, okay, but thank y'all for coming, I'm, I'm all on to two hours. Uh, let's take a vote, young lady, wants it in the mornings, those are. We didn't act like that for.
I know. My personality comes down.
All right. All right, those are in favor of the morning. Do you know you want to vote for yourself?
I am.
Those are paying for the one thirty, we.
What's after five?
Yeah, there's an after five, what about after five, we. I mean, I'm, I'm, now, we get, the next one, it's just going to be at five, say five thirty or something. I'll probably have it at the civic center, the, the east and west side of the civic center, not real good, we do have this capability over there, with the east, this port, we can get it over there. That may be, so, uh. Let's do five o'clock again. Five o'clock fans, five o'clock fans, five o'clock fans. One, one thirty, mornings are after, what about one thirty? So it's about, what was it?
So when we're at five, for, for five p.m.?
We'll do the next one at one thirty, we'll call it here for now, and then that one, we may, we may look at the five o'clock or five thirty. And we may, you know, it, it may be, again, you know, not for, we need to keep it to a Saturday, that's not, that's, that's not impossible either, okay?
You, you said one time, you made it five, you can't make it five, period. We can't get it up on Saturday.
No, no, but I, the next one, I want, if the next one, let's say it's at one thirty, and that one, then we take the five, when we set the priorities, then we set the statement. Or we say, we, we move it to a Saturday. You know, put the initial conflict there, so, but today's how it, it makes almost.
And I think if there's enough time, that, that people can arrange their schedule, you know, that we have ten days.
Yeah.
Make, make, uh, changes or get off for a while.
But the next one will be, um, probably February, I would say, so that'll be the city council time to meet, if y'all time to meet and so forth. And then we'll call them, we'll call them workshops then, where commissioners, commissioners can come, can come with them, or we're not going to need bird marriage, but. That'll be no partial decisions made here other than, hey, here's some guys that want to do, I'll take that back to the commissioners' court, and then we'll, you know, we'll put it on the agenda. Say, hey, here's, here's, here's how we, you know, the, the workshop, this is the priority, these are the priority, because a lot of those things have to be done in commissioners' court. Present it into the grant proposal in the minutes of commissioners' court with the grant, so a lot of our things that come out of workshops, that here are priorities. Okay, next commissioners' court, well, I don't need to, we'll set this as our priorities, the document, to get, to get the minutes, you know, get it. And then maybe we jump, but all of you just came, we all keep, uh, eat the minutes from the Ford and the city as well. Working on that maybe, and then maybe we see that.
It's getting hurt.
A big statement.
That would be the documentation to have as far as, um, showing the entities working together, the collaboration, that, that would be.
So, you know, the next one, we set priorities, they'll take it back, city takes it back, we take it back, first available meeting, we accept it, we adopt priorities. Accept it in our meeting and it's reported, all right? Anybody else have anything? What do you want?
Coffee.
I'm not a coffee drinker, so if you need a drink, bring your own. But I thank y'all so much, and then I say, whatever entity you want, whether it's the state or the Ford, you know, check out them.